Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the April 27th, 2002 ZBA meeting for Town in Merrimack. The next meeting will be May 25th, 2022, at 7:00 PM in the Matthew Thornton Room. If you could all please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, so Chuck, you're going to be sitting in for Rich, who is out this evening? Good, good. Not really, but that's, it's nice of you to say that. Um, all right, so if anybody here is going to be speaking for or against a petition, could you please stand and raise your right hand? If you're going to do any speaking tonight at all, please stand and raise your right hand. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truths to help you, God?
I do.
Thank you. If you could read the preamble, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Good evening to those in attendance and watching at home. For the benefit of those who have not previously attended a zoning board hearing, the procedure is as follows. The petitions will be heard in the order they appear on the agenda. However, the chair may change the order at their discretion. The board will treat each petitions, petitioners, their representatives, abudders, and others interested parties fairly and with respect. The petitioner will be asked to give an overview of the petition and read through their responses to the criteria applicable to their case, allowing for the board to ask questions after each item. State law and local ordinances establish the criteria that must be met in order for the board to grant approval to a petition, and it is the petitioner's responsibility to demonstrate that they have met each criterion. Following their presentation, the chair will floor, will open the floor for public comment, either in favor or opposed to the request. If necessary, an opportunity for a rebuttal will be offered to the petitioner and the public. However, discussion will not be allowed to devolve into back and forth arguments. All comments made shall be directed toward the chair. Should a question be asked, the chair will pose the question to the petitioner. Afterward, the chair will close the public hearing. The board will deliberate and vote on the petition. At this time, please silence all mobile devices.
Thank you, Rod. So just some housekeeping. Uh, when you come up to the, to, to present your petition, make sure that the microphone in front of you, there's a, there's a button. You want to push that button, you want to make sure the light is bright green. If it's not bright green, it means it's not on. So we need to have that on, so we can obviously record everything, so. Unless there's anything from town, okay? So we're going to start with our first petition, which is Jonathan Chassier. Petitioner owner variance under section 3.05 of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a garage four feet from the side property line, whereas 15 feet is required. The parcel is located at 6 Lorain Road in R4 Residential by Soils District, tax map 2B lot 316, case number ZBA 2022-11. Is the petitioner not here?
I am here.
You come down. Come talk to us, come have a seat. Do you have your paperwork for your, to? Okay, do we have a, do you have a copy of his paperwork that we could give him? So he can read in at five points? Excellent, thank you. Why don't you just have a seat, make sure the microphone's on, and if you could just state your name and address for the record.
Jonathan Chassier.
Okay.
Jonathan Chassier.
All right. All right, so Jonathan, welcome. What are we, what are we looking at here?
I'm looking to...
You want to make sure the great, the, just, just hit it once the light's on?
Okay.
And then just leave it on, you're there, good.
I am looking to build a garage on the side of the house, and the way the, the lot's set up, uh, it's a little smaller than the regular lots in town, so we don't have much room to work with. So basically, I'm looking to go four feet off the neighbor's property line with the side of the garage.
Okay. All right. Um, and in your packet, you have a, ta, 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 you have the five questions.
Yep.
I just need you to read in the question and then, you know, starting with granting the variance, and then read in your answer, so we have that in the record. Stop after each one, in case we have any questions, please.
Okay, so this is like the...
Starting with number one, and then work your way through.
Okay. All right, so a variance is being requested from section 305 in order to permit a 28 by 36-foot garage.
Okay. So number one, granting the variance.
Granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because, um, I think it would greatly improve curbside appeal.
Any questions on that? Number two?
The spirit of the ordinance is observed because, um, I put, it will increase the values for the homeowners and surrounding neighbors.
Okay. Any questions on that? Number three?
Uh, granting the variance would be substant, substantial justice because I put, uh, it would be a great, create a financial hardship to build a garage in any other location on the lot.
Okay. Number four?
Uh, granting the variance would not diminish the values of surrounding properties because, um, it would not diminish the surrounding property values. If anything, it would help increase surrounding properties' values.
Number five?
Number five, um... Owing to the following special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, explain how the property cannot be reasonably used. In strict confirmation, confirmation with the ordinance, and a variance is therefore necessary to enable a reasonable use of the property. Um, and that was, my property's smaller than new houses built in town. Therefore, the town setbacks do not allow me room to do much. Unless, or if I had to follow the setbacks, a garage wouldn't have a nice curb appeal.
Okay. And then the proposed use is far, is reasonable because...
The proposed use is just to put the cars out of the weather and, um, four-wheelers, ATVs.
Yeah, I was looking at the garage, looks like a nice garage, you, based on the plans here.
Yep.
Okay. So basically, you had, how old's the house, do you know?
Seventy-one. It was built...
It was built in seventy-one, so, so falls into, fall, you know, it's not uncommon. We see a lot of, a lot of people having to get variances for garages. How houses are built in the seventies, there's a lot of, not what they could call non-conforming lots...
Yep.
In Merrimack, so unfortunately, kind of need to adjust some, do some adjustments here and there in order to get a garage in.
Sometimes the lots, in case in point on this one, are narrower but longer.
Yep.
So you've got the extra space, but it's just not where you need it.
Yep.
And I can see by the aerial, it looks like you've got quite a few vehicles in the driveway.
Yep.
All right, excellent. Uh, is there anything else that you wanted to add, or?
Nope, that was...
Okay.
Okay, and as far, any questions from the board? Ben?
The garage can be used just for residential parking purposes?
Yeah, and recreational. I have a lot of four-wheelers, boats, so storage, you know, putting them out of the weather.
No commercial?
No.
Okay. And were you, were you thinking there's a second floor, like residential type thing, or?
No, no, I just, just wanted to confirm that it's going to inform to the neighborhood. There's no other use to the garage that would present nuisance.
Right, okay. All right, excellent. If there's no other questions, I'm going to open up the public. Is there anybody that'd like to speak in favor of this petition? Is there anybody that'd like to speak against this petition? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Is there any comments from the board? Motion's?
I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make the motion to grant Jonathan Chassier variance under section 3.05 of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a garage four feet from the side of the property line, whereas 15 feet is required. The parcel is located at 6 Lorain Road in the R4 Residential by Soils District, tax map 2B lot 316, case number ZBA 2022-11.
I'll second.
All right, motion made by Rod, seconded by Lynn. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Abstaining?
Is there an abstention? Okay, so we can, um, hold on a second, let me just double check. Um, one abstention surpasses, because we have three approvals, correct? Okay, motion approves.
You've got four approvals.
Sorry, four approvals, one abstention, so four, zero, one. Apologize, it's been a while since I've heard. Motion's approved. Uh, you do have 30 days in which somebody can come back and, uh, appeal. Uh, so, you know, if you build, start building tomorrow and someone can come back and appeal. But otherwise, uh, good luck.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
All right, next is Jin Min Song, petitioner and TW Bridge Associates LLC owner. Variance under section 2.02.1A of the zoning ordinance to permit a personal services establishment, massage therapy center in the R4 Residential by Soils District, whereas such use is not permitted. The parcel is located at 10 Twin Bridge Road in Unit 1B in the R4 Residential by Soils District, tax map 5D3 lot 115-1B, case ZBA, case number ZBA 2022-12. This is the petitioner here. Come on down. Have a seat. And state your name for the record.
I'm sorry.
State your name for the record.
Uh, my name is Chen Hong.
Okay.
And, uh, he, he's not here because he, uh, sick.
Okay.
I'm here instead of him.
Okay. Can you state your name for the, can you state your name for the record?
Uh, my name's Chen.
Chen, okay. Chen, um...
Could I ask his relationship, is he just a friend?
Yeah, are you a friend, are you, are you a business owner, or what's the relationship?
I'm partner.
Partner.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So, uh, why don't you kind of tell us what you're looking to do here?
I'm wanting to apply the approval for the, uh, massage bodywork store.
Okay. So then you have the, you have the criteria here?
Uh, that, that one.
You have this?
No.
Use mine. Yep.
If you could, starting, if you, if you could flip to the page for the variance criteria, it'll be, uh, section, there'll be five, five statements. Second page. There you go. Starting with gra, number one, granting the variance. If you could read through that and just stop after each one, in case there's any questions?
No, you need to read it out loud.
You need to read it to us.
Yeah, and I, I know. You mean, I have a question for that?
You, so starting with one, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. I need you to read that in for the record.
And then read in your answer, which is part of it.
Uh, yes.
Yep.
Yep. So I need you to read that in.
Uh, read it?
Yes.
Sorry. Uh, the user will have less traffic and neighborhood impact. Sorry, my English is no, no good, so...
Okay. So part of, part of the approval process is, in order to, we had, in order to be able to grant a variance, we need to have the information read in for the record.
Oh, okay.
Okay? If I, I, if you don't feel comfortable reading it in, we can postpone the variance until you have somebody who can read this in for you.
Uh, if it's possible, I can call somebody to translate it for me?
Well, you, you, you would need to, they would need to be here tonight to be able to do that. I mean, yep. Matt?
One.
Would you mind? Actually, hold on a second. Matt, why don't you come on down? I appreciate it, thank you.
All right, good evening, board. Matt Peterson with Keach Norsham Associates.
Matt, you're not on.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Sorry. Good evening, uh, Matt Peterson with Keach Norsham Associates. Uh, number one, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because, uh, the use will have less traffic, uh, on the neighborhood impact, environmental concerns, noise, and other recent, previous, and current uses. Property is within residential zone, however, residential use in the facility is not appropriate. So saying it's not going to be contrary to public interest because it would, it's going to have reduced traffic impact in the neighborhood is what they kind of went.
Yes.
Matt, what's there now?
What's currently there now, sir?
What's that mean?
What's currently on site now? Is it a house currently on site, like a single-family home?
Single-family home, I mean, no.
Mr. Chair. Uh, on-site is a multi-unit, uh, commercial condo. I know that there is a church there. I do not know what other tenants are in the other units there.
Uh, it, I don't know that it still does, but it did at one point.
One of, one of the units, one of the units at least is owned by a church entity. I don't know if they're there or not.
I was just curious, what's in this unit now? Or is it just vacant?
It's nothing.
So it's just vacant is what, vacant right now? Nothing's in there?
No.
So it's vacant right now?
So it will increase traffic because now you're putting some, some use on it?
I think what they were stating would be less use, a less intense use with the retail use compared to the massage parlor, I would say.
Number two?
Uh, number two, the spirit of the ordinance is observed because, uh, the area and the other tenants are all commercial or industry-oriented, and the approval of this service use would be completely within the spirit of uses that would be appropriate within the zone and area.
Number, number three?
All right, number three, granting the variance would do substantial justice. The facility was designed, approved, and used for commercial uses for decades, and adherence to the underlying residential zone would create a very undesirable result. Granted, this would provide justice to allow the property to be utilized as it was intended.
It is a commercial use. Number four?
Number four. Granted the variance would not diminish the values of surrounding properties because the use is less intensive than previous uses, and would not impact any surrounding, any surrounding in a substantial, even minor way. The value of surrounding properties would not change in any way due to our proposed use versus any other previous use or any future use that would be equally appropriate for the property.
Number five?
Uh, unnecessary hardship, uh, owning the special conditions of the property that distinguish from other properties in the area. The property is located in a residential zone. However, the property and associated commercial condo units are not residential structures, and it would be entirely inappropriate to utilize this property or any condo units residentially. This property is completely different from other residential structures in the area. And then B, the use is a reason one. The property is designed for commercial use, and our proposed use will not impact surrounding properties or increase any previous intensity already within the property.
Thank you, Matt. Okay. Are there any questions from the board? Seems to be pretty straightforward that this is a... Yep, go ahead.
I'm sorry. How many square feet is the condo unit?
So what's your area, you're going to use, so it's a 12,000-square-foot building. What's your area of your facility?
That's the whole building.
Right. Are you going to be the whole building?
No, 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 just the, uh, first floor.
So is this a two-floor building, 12,000?
Yeah.
So you're using about 6,000 square feet?
6,000 square feet, the bottom floor. Okay.
And how many clients will your massage parlor be capable of serving at one time?
How many customers?
Like four.
Four?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board?
Do we have normal hours? Hours of operation?
We will open at 9:00 AM, close like eight or nine.
So nine to eight, Monday through Friday?
Nine to eight, uh, Monday to Sa, Saturday.
Monday to Saturday?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? I'll open this up to the board. Matt, again, thank you very much. Is there anybody that'd like to speak in favor of this petition? Is there anybody that'd like to speak against this petition? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Um, any questions on the board, any discussion, thoughts? I mean, I think that, I mean, it's a, it's, it's a commercial area.
It's a reasonable use of the property.
Yeah. I don't see any issue.
Not, not heavy retail, it's, I, I think it's reasonable.
It's going to be light impact, if there's, if they're only going to have four customers, so...
There's plenty of parking back there.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
It's...
Yep.
Okay, there is a, there is a administrative note on this one as well, so do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the petition by Jin Min Song, petitioner and TW Bridge Associates LLC owner. Variance under section 2.02.1. A of the zoning ordinance to permit a personal services establishment, parentheses, massage therapy center, closed parentheses, in the R4 Residential by Soils District, where such use is not permitted. Parcel is located at 10 Bridge, Twin Bridge Road, Unit 1B in the R4 Residential by Soils District, tax map 5D3 lot 115-1B, case number ZBA 2022-12. Motion to approve.
Subject to conditions.
The petitioner, uh, should the board find the petition meets the variance criteria, staff recommends that any approval be conditioned upon the following. The petitioner shall obtain administrative approval from the community development department for the proposed personal services establishment.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Seconded by Chuck, all right. Motion made by Ben, seconded by Chuck. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Five, zero, zero. You're all, you, you have, congratulations.
Uh, thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck. All right. Next is, um, Ronald R. Ruland, petitioner, and Lori F. Ruland. And Ronald R. Ruland, trustees of the Lori F. Ruland Revocable Trust owner. Variance under section 2.02.1 of the zoning ordinance to permit the temporary occupancy of a travel trailer in the R2 Residential by Soils District while construction of a new single-family dwelling is underway. The parcel is located at 312 Babusik Lake Road in the R2 Residential by Soils District, tax map 6A-2, lot number 159, case number ZBA 2022-13. Hi.
Hi.
How are you doing today?
Good, how are you?
Good, good, so...
Some familiar faces, I've been here, uh, eight, nine times.
So, that may be a good or bad thing. So, uh, you must be Rod?
Yes.
All right, well, if you could just, say your name for the record?
Sure. Uh, Rod Ruland.
And Rod, why don't you tell us what we're, what we're looking at here?
Sure, so we, uh, got permission and a building permit to build a new home on our property at 312 Babusik Lake Road. As such, we started the demolition of the existing, uh, building, actually this week, and, uh, expect the demo to be complete by the end of this week. Uh, and construction to start shortly thereafter. Um, while we don't have use of the property, uh, we wanted to have the ability to put a travel trailer on-site so that periodically we could come over from our primary residence in Amherst to utilize, uh, the lake, certainly for the summer, uh, but also be there to supervise construction of the property while it's being built. And it's, uh, certainly going to take, given some of the supply chain issues and labor issues with contractors, you know, throughout this year and into, well into, uh, next summer. So, uh, with that said, um, we don't believe, uh, granting the variance would be contrary to the public interest, uh, given the fact that there is no longer a single-family dwelling on the site. We would put the travel trailer on the site in an innocuous position so that, again, we could use the property during the summer periodically. We believe that the spirit of the ordinance...
Actually, we just, we'll stop between each one, just in case there's any questions.
Okay, sorry.
Um, is there any questions regarding the first contrary to the public? Okay, number two. Oh, wait, sorry, go ahead.
I've got a question, I'm looking at the, the overview, and it looks like there's a fairly significant dwelling.
On the property?
On the property.
Uh, there's a, the, single-family home, and then back away from the lake is a, a large garage? Two-story garage, yes.
Yep. Which is not on the property?
No, it's not, we, uh, combined, that was one of the reasons I came here.
I remember that, yep.
Yep, so, so it's now all under one tax ID, roughly 2.2-acre lot.
So that, single-family home is what you are demolishing right now?
That's correct.
Got it, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Number two?
Sure. Uh, the spirit of the ordinance is observed because, uh, again, you know, our intent is to have a new single-family dwelling on the site, which is in the spirit of the ordinance and, uh, the permits that we've already been granted. Clearly, the, the new property will be upgraded and, uh, comply with all codes and standards. And again, the travel trailer is to give us the opportunity to be on-site during construction of the, uh, new building.
Questions regarding number two? Ben?
Is the travel trailer going to be hooked up to water on-site?
Uh, at present, no. But we have, are currently working with the contractor to enable us to have... I, we have water to that, uh, barn that you saw. Um, so we have to tie that in to the travel trailer.
And how about, um, your travel trailer toilets?
Yeah, good question. So because the contractor has on-site, um, quote, porta-potties for the use of the builders, I've already spoken with that firm, and they are, uh, amenable to take the affluent away periodically from the travel trailer.
So they'll do a pump-out right there?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Number...
Uh, number three, granting the variance would do substantial justice because, again, you know, one of the main reasons we want to be there certainly is to utilize the property for the family over the summer. But secondly, um, you know, protect our investment. And, uh, as I'm sure you know, there's been several fires over at Babusik Lake in the last, uh, year. So we would certainly like to be there to oversee things and make sure that, you know, there aren't, uh, people on the property that shouldn't be there, uh, in the evenings, et cetera.
Uh, just kind of curious, are you planning on being there year-round?
No.
Okay.
No, our intent's to be there in the summer months, probably through September into October. Uh, as I mentioned, our primary residence right now is, uh, in Amherst. And, um, I retired last July, so our intent is that this would be our ultimate home, and then we'd move from Amherst, uh, into this property once it's finished.
How large a travel trailer is it?
Um, it's, has one bedroom and then a...
Length?
Pardon me?
Length? How long is it?
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, 23 feet.
Very small one.
Yeah.
When, when do you anticipate the replacement home to be completed?
Uh, well, we're hoping, uh, we, uh, August of 2023.
And will this trailer be vacant during the winter?
Uh, that would be the intent. Yeah. I mean, if needed, we can certainly remove it from the property, uh, in the winter months. But I can tell you, you can walk around Babusik Lake and there's literally dozens of travel trailers on various properties around the lake.
Understand, but there's no reason to encourage occupancy when you're not there.
Right. Well, the good news is that it's 6.1 miles from our home in Amherst, and, uh, we'll be certainly there frequently, following up on the contractors.
Okay.
Uh, number four, please.
Uh, number four, granting the variance would not diminish the values of the surrounding properties because, uh, again, you know, it, this is kind of unique because we've taken down the property. We believe we're putting a nicer property on the site, and, uh, having the ability to be there, I think, will only enhance the value of the property because someone's there to watch over things. someone's there to watch over things.
And then, number five.
The unnecessary hardship, you know, in our opinion, if we don't get this, then we obviously don't have the ability to utilize the lake property as we had intended. And in that case, you know, it puts us in a hardship because we can't utilize the property and we can't oversee the work that's being done by the contractors.
Everybody felt something. Any questions? Any other questions from the board? Is, I'm gonna open up the public hearing. Is there anybody like to speak in favor of this petition? Is there anybody like to speak against this petition? Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Any questions or any deliberations from the board, any thoughts? There is staff recommendations, should we go to the approval stage? Yes.
All of these properties on Babusik Lake Road are getting bought up. They were little camps for many, many years.
Yep.
A lot of them not on septic, a lot of them just drawing water from the lake, and they're being bought up and they're being improved, and this is only gonna enhance the entire lakeshore. So I, I'm, I'm pleased you're doing it. I see no problem with doing it at all.
Thank you.
I would agree with you. I do definitely agree.
I've seen a number of them, and it's just, everything is, is being enhanced and we're not overdoing it. We're making things right.
Any other questions or comments, or wanna make a motion?
Yeah, I, my only concern with this in reading it was that it would be removed once the house is built, so it didn't become an indoor apartment.
Right.
So, with that in mind, if nobody has comments, I'd like to make a motion to grant Rod R. Ruland, petitioner, and Lori F. Ruland, and Rod F. R. Ruland, trustees of the Lori F. Ruland Revocable Trust Owner, variance under section two point oh two point one of the zoning ordinance to permit the temporary occupancy of a travel trailer in the R two residential by soils district while construction of a new single family dwelling is underway. The parcel is located at three twelve, three one two Babusik Lake Road in the R two residential by soils district. Tax map six A dash two lot one five nine, case Z B A two oh two two dash thirteen. Should the board find that the petition meets the variance criteria, staff recommends that any approval be conditioned upon the following. One, the existing single family dwelling shall be raised prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the new single family dwelling. And two, the variance shall only be valid until the new single family dwelling is constructed on a property, and it shall not permit more than one dwelling unit on the property after the new dwelling unit receives a certificate of occupancy.
I'll gladly second that.
All right, motion made by Rod, seconded by Lynn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Five zero zero. Good luck on the.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thirty days.
Thirty days.
They have thirty days for somebody to appeal, but.
Yeah.
They will.
Stated for the record.
Yep.
Stated for the, exactly. And next is Bernard Boucher, Revocable Trust Petitioner, variance under section three point zero two A of the zoning ordinance to allow two lots to be created requiring subdivision approval from the planning board with one lot having one hundred ninety-four thousand five hundred six, or, I'm sorry, one hundred ninety-four point five six feet of frontage, whereas two hundred fifty feet is required in the other lot having sixty-seven thousand two hundred sixty-one square feet of continuous upland area, whereas a hundred thousand square feet is required. Parcel is located at sixty-nine Bean Road in the R one residential by map, Anacar Conservation District's tax map, six B lots one four A, case number Z B A twenty twenty-two dash fourteen. Is there anything from town on this? Make a comment?
Just to summarize the memo, as you know, you saw a variance request on this property last month for a three lot subdivision proposal that was denied by the board. The applicant's coming forward now with a two lot subdivision proposal. Staff has determined that this proposal is sufficiently different enough from the prior one that was denied where the board can legally hear it.
Matt, how you doing?
All right, good evening. Matt Peterson again here with Keach Norsham Associates, representing Merrimack resident Ben Bichard of sixty-nine Bean Road. His wife is also with us in the back. As Robert just stated, last month, we were at the zoning board hearing for this parcel. We are located at sixty-nine Bean Road. This parcel, if you take a look at the map in front of you, is approximately twenty acres in size. We have Babusik Brook that splits this pretty much directly in half here from the east to the west. And we have a current home that sits up in the northwest, northeast corner of the property. This parcel, as I outlined at the last hearing, is surrounded by two different zones. It was why I had pushed the original application for three. I had stated the last that you have the residence R district, resident one district in the green, which we do, required the less of frontage and area. And then the yellow butts it on the backside here and on the west side here. And that is a residential district that requires the, the different sized lots that we had proposed last time. What the applicant was asking for last time was the six variances. We had proposed to put together three different lots, each one of them requiring two variances per. What we have done is come back and, obviously, my client here sat down with his attorney Greg Michael and gave me some direction to come back here with you guys on this new application here, which is now a proposed two lot subdivision. This two lot subdivision plan would be very similar to the variance you approved at one oh five and one oh seven Bean Road last year, where my new lot has the required frontage, but is short the contiguous. The existing lot here that has the house on it is the variance we are requesting for frontage. As you can see, the driveway is pretty much centered right in the middle of it here. This reduced lot here with an existing house with all the setbacks set on it meets very cleanly. The other lot, as we had discussed at the last hearing, the last time we came last month, there were lots that were very similar, I would say, to the Cathy Street project that you had had. I can agree with the board here that that was probably a little bit too much on the property that was there considering the size of the zoning on both sides. But now with this lot here being two hundred and fifty-one feet of frontage, we have over a hundred and eighty feet in the building envelope here for a single family home on this lot here.
So, if I remember, some of the concerns the last time were, I think, had to do with drainage, if I remember correctly. How is that kind of been, because I'm sure we're gonna get into it when we go through the points, but I just figured I'd ask.
Yep, that's fine. So again, on this one here, I had done lot sketches on the last project for you guys and made it clear that we were looking to do a smaller home with those lots. This lot here now is a standard lot in this, in the town. I'm not restricting it to three or four or five bedrooms. If somebody purchases this lot, they can put on what they would like.
Which lot, Matt?
The only lot we're proposing is the new lot. So, we have one existing lot with a house on it we're proposing that's gonna have fifteen acres, and there would be one new five acre lot at this location here.
And there's no restriction on size or bedrooms?
There would be no restrictions on size, again. Again, the one you proved down the road was eighty-six thousand, this one here is sixty-seven thousand square feet of area that's upland and dry. We are, obviously, the lot is over five acres in size now. I think your statement early in the night about the lo, long lot that needed the variance from the side from the garage, this lot here is very similar in the sense that we've got fifteen acres on the other side of the brook that to access it affects the environmental potentially, and there's a substantial cost to get across that side. I think it's very clear that the frontage area here is set up for this now on this type of development that we have in front of you. So the first thing is, like I said, lot one here, we're proposing a hundred ninety-four point five six feet of frontage where two hundred and fifty-one is required. This lot already has its house on it, already has the driveway on it, the pool in the backyard. Ben and his wife live there currently. He's gonna explain some of the things that he's put into this house in the last year and a half on that. And then we propose the second lot, again, with a hundred and eighty feet across. Last time I had about thirty feet. There's just substantially more area now to put on a house on this piece of property here in the front.
Much more reasonable.
Do you wanna, do you wanna go through the five criteria?
What I'd like to do first, just because the last hearing, I think a lot of people, he was in Florida, which I think a lot of people take that time down there. I would like you to, he wants to give you a little background.
Sure.
Of himself here, and then I'll go through the five criteria.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Bernard Boucher, everybody calls me Ben. I just wanna give a, just a brief background on me and the property, how I was aware of this property for sale when I bought it back in twenty eighteen. So I'm married with two grown daughters, live in Merrimack right now with my wife, as Matt just said, for eight years. For thirty years, I've run a self-employed tax and investment business. Eighteen of those thirty years have been right here in Merrimack. Prior to twenty twenty, if you looked, if you were sitting in Tortilla Flats and looked across to those white buildings, that's where you would see my sign.
You were in the garage.
Excuse me?
You were in the garage.
I was the garage?
She said you were in the garage.
Oh, okay. I don't know what that means, but.
The garage part of that building, I thought.
Right.
Yeah, they converted it to an office.
I know.
Yeah, okay. So anyway, that property has a two u, two-unit residential building and an office, which I think was a barn before, a horse barn, so. For the years of twenty fourteen to twenty eighteen, my wife and I lived on the first floor of a very small four-room apartment there while I ran my practice out of the garage. And, so, and I started there with Ray Mills CPA in two thousand and four. So there's my eighteen years of working in Merrimack. Twenty eighteen, after being there for four years, we got pretty tired of the traffic and the late night, you know, fire engines going by, and we decided we wanted to look for another place. And we wanted to stay in Merrimack because we want, I wanted to be close to, to my business. My wife is my assistant. So, we both worked there. And so a few months went by, and a really good friend of mine that I grew up with, his name is David Baker, told me he was selling his father's place on Bean Road because his father had passed away a few months earlier, and the inheritors were David and his sister, and they didn't want it. So, they knew I was looking, so they asked me if I wanted to purchase it. Of course, we negotiated back and forth, and in September of twenty eighteen, I bought it. I bought it from the estate of Michael Baker. A few months, uh, excuse me, the home itself was very outdated. Not much had been done over the years to upgrade the, you know, from the nineteen sixties when it was built. So Dave and I, we negotiated a price of two hundred and twenty thousand, which was pretty much fair market value at that time, four years ago for a house that was, needed a lot of work. So I put some mu, some of the money down and the bulk of it I financed. And since that time, over the years, I've added additional home equity loans, and I poured in another hundred and fifty thousand worth of improvements. So now we're looking at a three hundred seventy thousand dollar home that I've got invested in here. I truly did this to not only have a nice home to live in, but I think, you know, it kept, it either kept the property values up for me and my neighbors, or it raised them. So I just think that that was a good thing that was done. The reason I say this is because we have a lot of debt, right? I mean, we, and my, you know, my wife and I, we were hoping we could sell a piece of the land to help us out with our debt. We're really close to retirement years right now, and, you know, we don't have an employer funding a 401K for us or anything like that. And, you know, so we were, like, the other thing, when you're self-employed, you gotta double up on your social security and Medicare tax. A lot of people don't understand that, but we have to pay double because we're self-employed. So, there's a lot more expenses involved that people might not be aware of. My wife and I were just, were just ordinary people like everybody else. We're certainly not rich, we're just trying to make ends meet like everybody else. We view this sale as to help us, you know, get closer to retirement, our 401K replacement, if you will, or, or debt reduction. And, you know, frankly, when we get into retirement, we don't wanna be a burden on our family or society. You know, we wanna do things, we wanna make it on our own. So, and, and then finally, I think it's gonna benefit the town of Merrimack with additional tax revenue. And as well, it's gonna help a family in this housing crisis that we know about right now, and it, it might, it'll add one more home to, to an inventory, you know, an inventory shortage, so. That's why I'm, we're here tonight, my wife and I, in hopes that our variances get approved, and I thank you for listening.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, number one, it must not be contrary to the public interest. I would say granting a frontage and contiguous lot area variance, variances will not be contrary to public interest, more specifically, the requested variances will not unduly conflict with the basic purpose of the relevant zoning provisions as it will neither alter the essential character of the area nor threaten public health, safety, or welfare. As stated, variances along these lines have been granted on Bean Road. I think now we're at the right frontage and areas of our lots to make sure that this fits into the surrounding neighborhoods. The existing neighborhood remained largely unaffected by the subdivision's property subsequent to construction of one additional single family home. The applicant is requesting to subdivide the current twenty acre parent parcel into two lots. The parcel is located along Bean Road and bisected, as stated previously in my presentation, by Babusik Brook from east to the west of the property. The parcel needs two hundred and fifty frontage and a hundred thousand square feet of continuous land. We're building per town regulations, and the lots have a hundred ninety-four point five six of frontage for lot one, and sixty-seven thousand two hundred sixty-one square feet of contiguous for land for lot two. The applicant believes these variants would not be contrary to public interest, and we believe the public interest regarding this article is to ensure all parcels have adequate frontage to access the property and adequate width to ensure proper separation of homes on the proposed lots. As for access from the existing roadway system, it's pretty clear we have an existing driveway to existing house, and then the frontage along Bean, if you drove out there, is straight as a board in this location here. And with two hundred and fifty feet of frontage, we have the access location, safe access points to access the property. Again, we do not believe this will be contrary to public interest.
Any questions on number one? Number two, please.
It must be consistent with the spirit of the ordinance. Again, these are gonna be oversized lots in the town. We've got one at one at five acre and one at fifteen. Unfortunately, a lot of our land is unaccessible from us on the other side, but is very nicely located around town conservation land and stuff like that, so to leave it that would make a lot of sense, and allowing us to have something up front here, I think, would be definitely in the spirit of the ordinance. The applicant says the exact type of variance request that would be consistent with the spirit of the ordinance for a twenty acre parcel is bisected by Babusik Brook that yields similar lots when compared to surrounding homes. The spirit of the ordinance related to frontage contiguous land is to ensure safe access to the building lot and ensure proper spacing between homes. Both lots have adequate site access via Bean Road and more than adequate overall lot area within the lot to build one or more homes, and that is why we believe it's in the spirit of the ordinance.
Questions? So you did mention there, well, one would assume that if someone purchased that lot, they'd probably only build one home, correct? I mean, you said one or more. Is there, I, I mean, adequate overall lot area within the lot to build one or more home?
Yeah, to build one, I think that's probably from last month. No, they, I mean, they'd have to get another variance, and I think we just denied that.
Be a little tight.
They'd be tough there to do that.
Yeah, all right, all right, no worries. Number three, please.
It must result in substantial justice being done. I say, as, as stated above, by allowing the owner's parcel to subdivide his current twenty acre parcel into two lots would yield substantial justice to the landlord of this twenty acre parcel town of Merrimack, which is bisected by Babusik Brook, to be subdivided into lots creating an extra building lot in the town out, out of a substantially oversized lot. I also think you also heard.
I also think you also heard, uh, documentation from the owner of the substantial justice from a financial standpoint as well, from what he's put into the existing home to make sure that it did not fall into disrepair and become a eyesore on Bean Road. Um, I believe that is also, needs to be understood as part of the substantial justice that we believe would be done by granting this variance.
Any questions? Number four.
It must not diminish the value of surrounding properties. Uh, as stated in previous case, proposed construction of one single-family home on this parcel with reduced contiguous land and leaving the current home with a hundred ninety-four point five-six feet of frontage would not diminish values of surrounding properties since they will be similar uses as the surrounding properties and new construction. As such, the applicant does not believe this variance would diminish the value of surrounding properties.
And, uh, number five.
There is no substantial relationship to the general purpose of the ordinance and the specific violation being applied for. This is the attorney. First off, the board knows there are two ways to determine unnecessary hardship. Uh, the existing is special conditions or circumstances distinguish the subject party from the others. This applicant has outlined the special condition hardship case. As stated prior in this presentation, that believes that the special conditions exist for this parcel is the location and configuration of the parcel that relates to Babousek Brook and Bean Road, and the requirement of the town for proper access and contiguous land for new lots. Due to the size of the parcel and the location of this book running through this site, it distinguishes from other properties in the area, and it's why we feel the general purpose of the ordinance and the specific violation being applied for created unnecessary hardship for the property. Again, with the Brook location and the proposed size of the lots, the applicant believes this relationship between the general purpose of the ordinance and the specific violations being applied to this property creates that unnecessary hardship, uh, for the applicant. As such, there's no substantial relationship between the general purpose of the ordinance and the specific violation being applied to the property for all variances requested. The proposed use is reasonable. Uh, proposed use of a single-family residence is allowed by right in the zone, and therefore that feels that one additional single-family residence would be a reasonable on this parcel of twenty acres. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Is there any questions from the board? Okay, I'm gonna, I'll have you ask a gentleman to step aside for a second. Uh, is there anybody that'd like to speak in favor of this petition? Is there anybody that'd like to speak against this petition? Come down one at a time, please. Could state your name?
Yes. Good evening. Uh, my name is Harold Brodel. I live at seventy-one Bean Road.
Okay.
First off, I just would like to thank all of the board members. After doing some of my research with the town, I had realized that you're all volunteers, so I do wanna thank you on behalf of the taxpayers and the residents of, of Merrimack for your time.
There are, there are vacancies if you're interested in applying.
Dave actually spoke to me about that, but, uh, we'll get through this first.
Just in case.
Yes, I, yeah. Understand. Um, okay. So a couple of things that I'd like to address, uh, as a follow-up to, to our meeting that we had last, last month. I had previously lived at Indian Rock Village. Uh, I've lived in, lived in Merrimack for thirty-two years as a, as a resident and taxpayer. Living at Indian Rock Village, uh, you know, I was involved, but not probably to the level I should have been because when I came home after, after a weekend of, of being away, uh, there was a whole area to the left of Bean Road, uh, I mean, to the left of Indian Rock Village that was clear cut to, to the bottom. And there's a big development going in. And, and that, that aggravated me. Uh, I, I should have been more involved. Uh, when you get these certified letters, you actually should come to the meeting. Uh, from what I understand, most people don't come, and that's how things can happen. And I didn't go to those meetings, and I regret that because, uh, that's when I decided it was time to leave. And when I left, I moved to, to Bean Road. And I moved to Bean Road, uh, under the understanding that there was requi- requirements to developing in the area. Requirements where you had to have a hundred thousand square feet and two hundred and fifty, uh, feet of, of frontage. And when I checked in with the town and spoke with them about that, that was told to me that that's, that's what it was gonna be. So when I asked the board when I was here last time, I said, did you know how that came about? And, and no one knew how that came about. So I did some research on how that came about. So how that came about, to the best of my knowledge, is back in the fifties. They decided, nineteen fifty-six, I think I was told. It was, it was, it was decided, it was brought up to the taxpayers to vote on. If I'm clear about this, is what they told me. And the taxpayers of Merrimack decided that they wanted to set aside an area in Merrimack so it wouldn't be overdeveloped. That was the reason that I was told that the area that I live in and chose to live in and bought my house at seventy-one Bean Road was that it could not be developed. Be, uh, okay, with that said, um, I'm, I'm here today to ask you to abide by what the taxpayers, what the voters asked of, of the town back in nineteen fifty-six, and the vision that they had to try to keep it uh, in, in, in what it is. I, I don't care what there is three blocks away. I don't care. You know, you, as you keep making exceptions and you keep compromising, and, and you don't stick by the rules and the laws, um, that's what happens, development happens. You have houses a block away from me that are a million-dollar homes. So what happens when they come and they decide they want to start breaking up their land? Because you know what? That, that's their situation. They want to make some money. I have nothing against capitalism, but there's rules that were set in place for, for us to abide by and for you to abide by. And, and I'll address a couple of other quick things. The other thing was, so this, 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 this need for housing. So when I was here last month, I told you that it, 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 it had been ten offers at ten percent above, if you remember correctly, was what was the norm at that time, the norm before that time. And as of a month ago, I told you that it was five, uh, offers at five percent. Well, you all live in Merrimack, so if you drive around, you'll see a lot of houses for sale, and you don't see them getting sold very quickly now. Part of that is because you have interest rates going between four and six percent. And I'm not in real estate. I just, I just, I just read. I pay attention to what's going on. Six percent. A lot of young people can't afford homes. Yes, there is a need for homes. Uh, what you need is you need low-income homes, and you need affordable homes. So the home that I'm hearing now that's, that may be proposed, once the lot is sold, sold off, it's not a three-bedroom home like we were discussing last time. Could be four, could be five, could be five hundred thousand. It's, it's, it's something of that nature probably because a lot goes for like two hundred thousand dollars. So let's face it, someone wants to make some money. So that doesn't address the fact that we need more housing. Number, that's, that's that issue. Okay. So the issue in terms of, and, and I don't, I don't know the, the people that are asking for this. They're my neighbor, but no, they haven't come in. They haven't spoken to me. Um, so I was, uh, a, a business owner for thirty-two years. And I know exactly what it's like to have to pay double this, double that. I'm probably close in age to them. Um, so, yeah, I know the struggle of having a small business, but you know, I made that decision just as the applicants made that decision. And, and the fact that, that they wanna, they wanna fund their 401K and all that, I'd like to form my, you know, mine too. Why don't we just clear cut the back of my yard and throw a house back there? Because that's not right. That's not what, that's not what the laws are, okay? And, and, and personal things of retirements and that has no bearing on the decision of, of, of what's gonna be done today and, and what we're, and what we're asking, and what they're asking for, okay? And let's go back to the other facts. So they bought it four years ago for two hundred and twenty thousand. It's actually, when I did the research, it was done on September eleventh, two thousand and eighteen. When they bought that land at two hundred and twenty thousand, yes, there was some work that had to be done in the house. They knew that when they bought the house. That's not a surprise. It is set way back from the road. So any improvements they did, most of them were, were done inside. That, that's fine. I, I, that's a nice thing that they did. But they knew they had to spend some money into it. So you look up what it's worth today, okay? Right now, that house, that property can be sold for anywhere from four hundred and sixty-one thousand to four hundred and seventy-one thousand. So even at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you could sell it right now and make a lot of money. So there, there's no reason, that, that's not, that's not, that's not a fair assessment of the situation there in terms of, 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 of how much money you can, you can make or not make with ca- or cost or not cost to, to have a property. So I, I wanted to just, uh, clarify that, that fact, uh, that was discussed. So I am, I'm gonna request, uh, from the board once again that the taxpayers of Merrimack voted on keeping areas in Merrimack with a hundred thousand, uh, square feet, two hundred and fifty feet of, of road frontage for, for a reason. To protect, to, to make it a protected area, so it wasn't overdeveloped. And I believe that you have a responsibility tonight to, to stand by those, those, those taxpayers, those voters, and, and, and not grant this based on the principle, uh, sole principle that, that if you keep allowing people to, to wedge in these properties, then, then the whole idea of laying out a format to, to plan for the future is just gonna dissolve. We're gonna turn into Nashville. That's not what, what, what I wanted to buy. That's not what the people in my area. I don't think that all the homes that are being built in that area that, that are, that are going for seven hundred and fifty, a million dollars, all those taxpayers, I don't think those people had intended that whenever there's a little, little piece of property that someone wants to sell or build on, they can just wedge it in there. I don't think that was all of their attentions. And, and I think you have an obligation to me, to my other neighbors, uh, and unfortunately, more of them didn't come. Like I said, I wish I had gone a long time ago. I think that project probably still would have went through, but at least I would have had a better understanding of what was happening. Um, this is pretty clear-cut. I see black and white here. I, I decide, if you say yes to this, then you're going into the gray areas of things, okay? Because the rules are the rules, and, and those are the restrictions that it has. And, and I don't, and, and I said, you go back to, you go back to, to question five. Um, I, I don't see, I don't see that. I don't see that. This, this person could sell this property, make a hundred something thousand dollars right now if they're so concerned about making, making money for their 401K, okay? That, that's, that's, that's not, that's not true. Maybe, they're probably very nice people. I have nothing personally against these people. I don't know these people, okay? But I was a business owner. So, yeah, I know the feelings that they have, but that has no bearing on it. A lot of what this gentleman said, no bearing in your decision tonight. It's black and white. The taxpayers told you in a vote, it's been upheld since nineteen fifty-six, that you have to have a hundred thousand square feet, you have to two hundred and fifty square feet of footage, and that's it. Uh, there's, there's nothing more to discuss. You listen to variances. I've gotten variance in City of Nashville. I know how variances work. There's hardships. I understand what hardships are, okay? I went in front of the, the City of Nashville for a hardship, and I was granted one. Totally different circumstances. This, this is for pure making money. This has nothing to do with, with, with hardship. This isn't, this isn't like the other cases that you've heard tonight, heard last week, or you hear other, other, a garage and a per- that's nothing to do with this. This is pure making money. This is asking you to compromise the values that, that you're supposed to be withholding for, for pure profit. That's all I see it as. Uh, thank you very much for your, 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 uh, your time.
Do you want me to take this? To address your point, a couple of things, just, just to, cause you made your point, I'd like to make, uh, one for the board. Uh, one, those plot, those plans were done in, in your, I will take your word that it would, they're past nineteen fifty-six or sixty-five or whatever. Um, but a lot of the, a lot of the intentions that were made back in town of Merrimack don't necessarily fit in with where the town is now, with where the town is heading and with what is needed to keep the town sustainable. Now, you do make a, a point that, yes, there are people that come and ask for variances to change, to change property size, continuous upland, and things like that. And you did, you, you claimed, you said, well, you know, it's all based on making money. Um, I, I've been on this, I've been in zoning for, gee, twelve years now, and I could tell you that almost all of the cases regarding that is about making money, about people wanting to, you know, improve their lives, to sell property, to expand property. Now, this gentleman is actually, we, we did deny the variance last time, and on, on, you bring up some very valid points, don't my, and, and, and I appreciate you to, to doing the research, and, but it's also something to keep in mind that what they, they have actually come back and proposed a smaller footprint, so to speak, i- where instead of making three properties out of one, they're making two properties out of one. If he was to sell his property today, and, 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 and again, this is going on the ifs and the whats that we don't generally try to do in, in ZBA, but if he sold his property today to someone else, someone else could come in here and say, oh, we want to stick a public urban development in there, which means that they could put twenty houses, or they could put, you know, ten houses in there and get, uh, clearance from the Army Corps of Engineers and Conservation to go right across the Brook and build a bridge. So what he's proposing is gonna be potentially more friendly to the neighborhood than if he was to sell his house to a developer who decided they wanted to clear cut that entire area and, and, you know, hire a, a bunch of lawyers to get the Conservation Commission to make some changes and put in fifteen houses across the street from you. I do understand what you're saying, um, and, and it's certainly, we definitely would take into consideration, but you, you do, you know, you have to look at the other aspects of it as well. He did redefine kind of what they were looking for to make it a little bit um, more acceptable to the people in the neighborhood, but I, and you, and you bring up some valid points, and, and like I said, I appreciate you doing the research and, and letting us know about, you know, when, when those amendments were done. I, it's, that's great, something for me to learn, but i- it is important to notice that, you know, this happens throughout the town. Um, and this is, this isn't the first time we've heard this, a, a case like this, and I guarantee you it won't be the second, the last time we hear a case like this, this year alone. Um, but you do bring up a pre- pretty valid point, and we do see a lot of that out there, that a lot of people are, you know, subdividing land and, and doing that, and it is, i- it is acceptable, and, and you're right. You know, you would like to see a lower-income housing or workforce housing, and we actually approved a project that's gonna have some workforce housing, which was great. Um, but in the, on the other side of it as well, um, you know, you kind of look at it, you know, do you want one house or do you want fifteen? You know, could they buil- could someone come in and build a five-bedroom home? Sure. They could also come in and build a two-bedroom home. It's, it's really, you know, but, uh, i- it seems like that they, they're making an effort to try to appease a lot of the neighbors locally by not dividing it into three and, and, and creating more traffic and more burden on the folks around and, and, you know, in, in trying to, in trying to, so they are thinking of their neighbors. But at least from what I, when I got from the impression, but again, like I said, I do appreciate the points you made and, you know, and I, and I, I appreciate you letting us know the information.
So I, I have one.
Come on up.
Okay, so I, I have one follow-up question then. What's stopping them from taking the piece of property that's gonna have fifteen acres and subdividing that down the road?
There's nothing.
Right.
But other than, other than that they would have to come in for the board, and they would have to get approval for that land to be sub- subdivided.
Right. So I guess if, 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 if that was to be cut off and was to donate it back to the town, I would have felt better with this. But based on the fact that they could be still in future development, uh, then, then it, it, it's the way it's being done here, you could just cut it off, you could go into the side of the Brook. They can buy a house that, that's on the other side there, develop it.
Mm-hmm.
And it could just happen like you're saying. And that would be easy. For someone to come in and get, and lawyer up and get all these lawyers and mull it all down, the numbers don't work probably. But, but you're giving them the option of down the road to be able to do something. So if you were to put in.
They don't really have that option. They don't. They, and, and they don't really have that option. They, they, it, cause.
So you're saying once, maybe I misunderstood then. So once, if you approve this, that, that whole fifteen acres, half the state's fifteen acres, they can't subdivide that ever?
Oh, they could, they could, they could go ahead and subdivide it. They gotta come before the board, and they have to have the same type of.
They have to get approval.
Approval.
Right. So that, that's a lot easier. So, so that can still happen, right?
And we could deny this tonight, and next month, they could come up with, um, a proposal
Right.
to put in a cluster zone with twenty houses.
Right.
And there are many.
It's not gonna change whether we approve it or don't approve it. That's not going to change.
Right.
They could sell it tomorrow, and someone could put a cluster development in it, and there are lots of cluster developments in Merrimack. In fact, there are a lot. I, I would, I could, I could think of like eight, nine off the top of my head. And that would, that would be ten to fifteen homes.
There's a lot of wetlands back there. There's a, there's, there's, there's a five-hundred-year flood, water, there's a lot of things with that property. I don't think it'd be that, that quick. I mean, I personally don't think it's gonna be that easy just to go in there and do, and do what you're saying for the developer. There's a lot of hurdles that they would have to do with EPA, a lot of stuff. So I, I disagree, but, but approving this, they could come back in, in two years from now and want to do something in the back there.
They could, and, or, or they could do nothing for the next fifteen years.
Yeah.
I mean, it's the woulda, coulda, shouldas, right?
Right, no, I, I.
So.
But again, it's whether we approve it tonight or we don't approve it, that could happen.
Right.
And they could, they'd have to jump through hurdles. They'd have to have lawyers. They'd have to do all kinds of things with EPA and,
Right.
and wetlands. That could happen whether we approve this or not.
Right.
And you could subdivide your property tomorrow too.
Yep. Well, we don't have the, the frontage. I mean.
Well. You still ask for the variance. So I mean, again, I, I, I mean, I, again, I understand where you're coming from.
I understand. I, I guess, like I said, when, when do you just say, when do you just say no? When do you, when do you say no? You know, you have outlet malls with a million, you know, you're getting a million dollars of, of income down. There's a lot of places you can develop. So when, when do you just say, listen, the, the people wanted this area saved, uh, why are we gonna just keep, keep making, you know, exceptions? I, I guess that's what you have to ask, is why do we just keep making, making exceptions?
And I, and what, and I guess I'll, I'll leave it at this. You're, you bring up some very valid points. The passion you have, you should probably look into, honestly, look into either ZBA or planning because those are two areas in which you probably will have, you'd be able to have an impact on that area. And, and, and I say that quite honestly to you.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah, I understand what you're saying.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Sure.
Also, a comment if I could to you, sir. I think I understood you being concerned with Mr. Boucha commenting about his 401K and all that when he introduced himself. When we make a decision, our decision, it was nice to hear from him and meet him, our decision will be based on the five criteria that I explained. So regardless of what he said, our decision would not be based on that. So to give you some comfort, that his story did not influence us. Our responsibility is to work off the five articles of criteria.
Is there anybody else? Oh, go ahead, Lynn.
I want to address the comments regarding the voters' approval of zoning when they did it way back when. One of the other things that is available are the variances, which is why we sit here. And we can say, generally speaking, this is what the rule is. However, we have the ability to make an exception to that rule, and the voting public understands this, that in this instance, maybe not this instance, but in this instance, it makes sense to allow this. And so that's part of, when you say, the voters approved this and we shouldn't change it, I disagree. We have the ability to make exceptions to what the voters approved, going back whenever. But we have to make it with reasonableness. And we can't, and like last time, he came with a proposal, and we said, what are you nuts? We're not going to do that. That's way too heavy a burden on that property. We're not going to do it. So we don't just automatically approve things just because people want to do it.
I didn't say you do. I just said at some point, you know, you have to stay on my principle.
Yep, and we did.
That's all I was trying to say.
I know. And we did. Last time we said, I didn't, I was not here, but I would have said no. So there are exceptions, and we have to weigh in those exceptions with, based on, and the fact that somebody next door did something doesn't mean you can do it, because it could be different, and you have to go by the criteria.
Does anybody else like to speak? I'm sorry, go ahead, Chuck.
One of the difficulties that I have with this particular location is that we are going to visit it again, and again, and again. And while we are a reasonable board and would like to make accommodations for people to utilize their property, at the same time, when we make a decision, we would like to have the zoning question adjudicated, so we don't have to revisit it. And the elephant in the room here really is that there is that conservation, excuse me, there is that portion on the backside of now two lots that really can't be accessed in a way that isn't price prohibitive. So for instance, on this one long, narrow lot, one would ultimately, I guess, you know, by my dead reckoning, they'd have to tear down the house, build a road in, cross the brook, and then put in some type of cluster development or something. All of this is just fraught with difficulty, and it's all because the land on the other side of the brook is largely landlocked, or in this case, brooklocked. And the gentleman who lives on Bean Road was just testifying, and he said, well, I would have been happy to see all that backland put into conservation, and I could deal with two house lots on Bean Road. And if some arrangement like that were to be possible, then it would indeed solve the problem forever. And we wouldn't have somebody coming back in two years, or three years, or whatever, and saying, well, you know, I'd really like to do this.
Yeah, but we have to look at what's right in front of us at the moment, and not the what it could've showed us. And I kind of apologize for going off a little bit into a tangent on the what it could've showed us. We have to look at, like, right here, right now, this, you know, what we're looking at, and not what could be, what would be, what would be nice. We have to look at what is at the moment, so.
Well, that's nice of you to counsel me, Mr. Chairman, but the fact is that this is all about making a judgment. That is the position that each and every one of us here on the board is in. We're not really being asked to approve or disapprove of anything. We are asked to make a judgment, and that requires a great deal more than checking off the boxes. Or we'd simply have Mr. Price and his crew do that, and we wouldn't have to bother. So we do have to consider a great deal about the human condition and the reality of a situation where we can anticipate that we'll have more difficulty in the future. And if we can solve problems at this point, I think that is a much better goal to reach for, particularly when, you know, it's the elephant in the room, is that all of that land in the back really is best served in conservation because it's surrounded by conservation land, and it's relatively inaccessible to anybody who would buy these two house lots, as in fact the present owner found, where it was simply too much to keep up with, and now he wants to, you know, make a little bit of money to help, you know, defray some of his expenses and so forth.
Mr. Chair, could we save this for the committee and allow the public to continue? I appreciate what you're saying, Chuck, but I think what you're saying would be part of our committee at the end.
On everybody else's ability to have something to say.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that'd like to speak against this petition? I'm sorry, Matt. Yes, come on down.
Do I have to turn this on?
Yeah, it's already on. It's already on.
Oh, I'm sorry. Evan McDonald, sixty-five Bean Road. So this is kind of disheartening. I don't even know where to go. Everything turned into a chat session. So last time we were here, we were proposing a ridiculous three lots. Everybody agreed on that. That proposal was putting a house forty feet off my driveway, something you would see in the city. I also disagree calling it five acres. I really, really think you guys need to visit the fact that that is a marsh very quickly. I even questioned the sixty-seven thousand square feet in that proposal. At best, before the land drops off, you're looking at about two hundred feet. And as of do no harm, when I purchased my property off my aunt and uncle, who built in the sixties, that land was always considered not buildable. The privacy it affords and the privacy that will be lost is directly related to property So by granting this for him, you're taking away from me. I've been a resident for twenty-five years. I've been paying for that property and have that as my investment. As he stated, I've been self-employed for twenty years. Recently, I've had to go back to work for somebody. But my retirement is my property, and eventually taxes will force me to sell, because I will no longer be able to work, and that'll be sell my property and change regions, literally, because there will be no retirement. That being said, I don't ask favors from the board. I ask them to uphold the building codes in that area, my area, codes that I've been assured would keep that property private. So as in do no harm, you will do harm directly to me. My temporary garage, the way that land's laid out, yes, if I had known I was on his land, no question. I knew Mike next door, went and visited. I was told that that land, when you come down my driveway, about twenty feet into the woods, I owned. That turns out to be false. Well, pity on me, nobody ever surveyed my property. There was no surveying. There was only written-down degrees. So yes, but that's not even a concern of mine. My concern is, you place a house that far down to meet all the restrictions, like I said, the first one was thirty feet. And as far as the proposal for three lots, it reminds me when I was a teamster for three years, back, way back in the eighties. When we voted on a contract, we literally were looking for one sick day, because we had none, and we wanted one sick day out of the company. So we asked for ten. We neither got ten, and we neither got one. We got nothing. We got a dollar an hour. So I hate to say that's what's happening here, but you're looking at it as a compromise, but I don't see it that way. I still see it as a loss of privacy and a loss of potential income on my property. So as far as do no harm, please do no harm to me. And that's all I really have to say. Thank you for your time.
Anybody else starting to speak against this petition? All right, if you would like to come up and address the concerns, Matt?
Okay, so just to touch base on a few of those, and as the board member said, I think he should get on the board. When you've done that much research, I've done this for twenty-five years, and I've gotten three people that have gotten boards, a couple in Milford, a couple of different places. I think it's a good thing. Let's go back to the comments on the nineteen fifty-six and where things were said. I would agree with some of the statements there that, you know, we all know the zoning is laid out to, in certain areas of towns, to have everything be consistent to what's around there. We are proposing now two lots. One's fifteen acres, one is five. If you went strictly by the nineteen fifty-six regs that were being talked about back here, it's two-point-five acres of lots. So one of my lots is two times the size of a regular lot in your zoning, and the other one is seven times bigger than that, okay? Number one. Number two, it is not a bowling alley. The back half of this lot of fifteen comes like this, and then opens up all in the back. And if you notice why we did that, is for potential, maybe future, what can be done. I don't want to talk about ifs, ands, or buts, as you guys had said here, but you guys have been doing this a long time, I've been doing this a long time. Somebody said, well, put your house on the market right now and sell it. Okay. Go buy what? Go where? Go do what? He puts this on the market, every single developer in this town is going to ask me to lay out a road through that brook to get to the back piece that's viable. We all know that. That is the first thing that's going to happen. This gentleman has been working with the board. I think you did exactly what the butter said. You told us to pound sand last month. You guys specifically looked at the regs and said, that is too much. That is not consistent with the neighborhood. You are overgoing with it. We have come back to something that I think is definitely within what is in the surrounding areas. I do not believe there's an elephant in the room. We put that land, sir, with the house on it. There are very few times when you guys have been doing this, and very few times that I've done this in twenty-five years, that we've torn down a house to put a road through it, especially with the costs that are with it, and if the house has been redone. So, you know, yes, somebody could buy that fifteen acres, they could tear down the house, they could put it right away in. The problem that we've created for that developer is that this is a long bowling alley now. When you build a town road, the cost of a town road now is between six hundred and eight hundred bucks a linear foot. If you have to go all the way to across the brook, which is about a thousand feet, before you get your first home, that's a problem. If this land was not subdivided here tonight, they put the road in, put houses on both sides before they cross the brook, and then cross, they make their money before they go. Again, this gentleman felt very bad that he was down the floor last month. He's come here to show to you that he is looking to do what is right for the town, that the board members here can vote on something that is clean, that is not, you know, again, last month, perfect example, okay? We were trying to do something, it was almost along the lines of workforce housing. It was a mistake not in this area. As you said, you've just approved one over by Twin Bridge, so that's a good location for it, more in the commercial industry. That makes a lot more sense. As far as, you know, you said most of the portion of these two lots is going to be the back here now, well, right now, it's one lot with a portion of the back. So again, the elephant in the room, I didn't see that. I think we've tried to, again, this project, this proposal in front of you, I think meets the intent of your zoning regulations and why we're here tonight. As you know, a lot of people ask for waivers on, or variances from your regulations. There is, the board is here for that. That's all I'd like to say tonight, and appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing. Comments from the board? Go ahead.
This is a classic case of Robert Frost's, "Take care to sell your horse before it dies. The art of living is to pass one's losses on." It's just a question of who's going to lose at any given point, and that's in our hands, because we are the ones that have to adjudicate and judge how our zoning is going to be interpreted. It's not on the people for, and it's not on the people against. It's on us. Are we going to solve a problem? Are we just going to say, let the planning board deal with it?
Anybody else? Do I have a motion? Motion for or against, if someone would like to make one?
I'd like to make a motion to grant Bernard Boucha, revocable trust petitioner-owner, variance under section three point oh-two A of the zoning ordinance to allow two lots to be created, requiring subdivision approval from the planning board, with one lot having one hundred and ninety-four point five-six feet of frontage, whereas two hundred and fifty feet is required, and the other lot having sixty-seven thousand two hundred and sixty-one square feet of contiguous upland area, whereas a hundred thousand square feet is required. Apostle is located at sixty-nine Bean Road and the R1 residential by MAP in Aquifer Conservation Districts, tax MAP six B lot one four one, case number ZBA two oh two-two dash fourteen.
Mike, put your mic on. Your mic's not on.
Do I have to start over?
No.
Should the board find that petition meets the variance criteria, staff recommends that any approval be conditioned upon the following: the petitioner shall obtain approval from the planning board for the proposed subdivisions.
Do I have a second? Motion made by Rod, seconded by Ben. All right, all in favor? Prove the motion, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Abst-
Abstaining? You've-
All approve.
Approve. So it's passed. So two, four, four, one, zero. Gentlemen, you're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Good night. All right, next item. Is there anything from, uh, town?
Patrick, I apologize. I think, uh, what I'm about to talk about ended up getting rejected when I tried to send it to you, so you may not know what I'm mentioning. The end of last week, as everybody else knows, I did send an email to remind everyone that the May's ZBA meeting is coming up. That is the annual meeting, where a chair and vice chair have to be appointed by the rest of the members of the board. And the reason I mentioned that, or wanted to call it to everyone's attention a little early, is Rich, who has served as chair now for three terms. The zoning board of adjustments, rules of procedure prohibit him from serving an extra term unless they were to vote to ignore that provision, which you can do. And another reason I wanted to bring it to your attention was, we have Patrick, who has served again of a number of years as chair. I do not know if you'd be willing to do it again. If I look down the line, I know Rod has been vocally opposed to doing that. I know Lynn potentially has been vocally opposed to that, which would leave Ben, who I do not know his level of comfort. So as you can see, we're gonna run into a little bit of an issue, uh, next month. So I wanted to bring this up so you guys have a month to really think about where we're going here, because somebody's gotta be able to do it.
What's up? Yep.
Can we permanently remove the three-term restriction?
You can. We can amend the rules of procedure to propose that amendment, yes.
Then I would, for no other reason, I would propose we do this. No other board has this kind of restriction. I don't see a need for us to have it. Now that's, regardless of what's gonna happen.
I would, I would say, I, I, I get, see where you're going with it. I'd say the only reason that, I think, and I don't know, but I think the only reason we do is because we're the only board that can actually break the law.
I know.
Abend the laws, so. But yeah, I mean, I get what you're saying.
Um, can I make a motion to remove that?
Not so much like that, but your guidance to us would be to pr- provide you with a proposed revision to the rules of procedure at your annual meeting next month that would-
Perfect.
-alter that language.
Do it.
Yes.
Okay.
Rich still doesn't want to.
It's short-term.
I did enough. All right, uh, approval of the minutes for Wednesday, March thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
I didn't watch the meeting, so I'm not involved here.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we accept the minutes as written.
A point of order, Mr. Chairman?
Sure. Chuck, what's up?
I think it would be more appropriate if we asked Mr. Price to provide a recommendation for our consideration at the next meeting.
Okay. Regarding?
Rules of procedure.
Rules of procedure.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly what we would do. We would provide you amended language for you to then take and vote on.
Yeah, vote.
You could take that language and amend it further if you want. We basically would draft an amended, a proposed amendment that you could then take and alter further if you wish, take it as it is.
You guys have done, I've been on the board, you guys have done that in the past, not on other things.
Yep.
We've seen it, yeah.
Yep.
You'll get it, usually you get it in your packet and take a look at it and then we vote on it during the meeting. Yeah.
I, I guess I just kinda heard. I, I mean, I may not even be able to vote.
You'll, you'll, they'll put it together.
I heard a make it so.
No, make it so was, give us a proposal for next meeting.
To amend-
The, the, the-
That guideline.
The guideline of, of, of the, of the chairperson only being able to hold three terms and then, the, the, basically, the town, town is going to-
I'm just saying that it was proposed rather hastily as a foregone conclusion.
No.
No, 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 not yet.
No.
No. It's been proposed, they'll put the one and go.
I'm simply saying that's the way it sounds.
Oh, okay.
We still need to vote on it.
Yeah. To accept. No, I, no, I understand what you're saying. That's what it sounded like, that's in, that's-
I'm just saying, make the, make the proposal and let's talk about it.
Yep.
I think Lynn had made the suggestion and Mr. Price had said, she can't. He would present it to us and then we would vote on it.
You gotta watch Lynn. She moves very quickly.
She's on her way out the door. She's doing anything she can.
That's right. I think it's worth considering.
Absolutely.
And we can, we can say, no, we're not gonna change it, in which case-
All right, so, uh, meeting minutes for March thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Do I have a motion?
You had one and it was seconded.
Motion to-
I, I had one and it was-
Then we get sidetracked.
Redirected to another conversation.
Okay, so motion by Rod, seconded by Lynn.
Nope.
No.
By Ben.
Seconded by Ben. I apologize, Lynn was not here. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed?
Abstaining.
Uh, four, zero, one, because Lynn was not here. Yes, sir.
Why didn't you watch it?
Before we move too far, um, Chuck, are you all set with your concern? I mean, I, we're, we're moving quickly from one topic to another, I wanna make sure.
All right.
Okay.
I have a motion to, wait, is there anything else? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Yeah, we kinda cut Robert off too.
All right, thank you very much, everybody. Have a great, uh-
Thanks for filling in.
April, Happy Mother's Day and, uh-
That too.
Yeah, that's coming up as well.
My birthday's next month, if anybody wanted to buy me anything.